Ready.
Move off.
Pauls.
Pauls.
Palermo. Festerson.
Harding.
Jerem.
Melton.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Brinker Harding?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the risk of mixing church and state, I'm going to steal something from where I go to church. Just take a minute to look next door to you, reach out a hand, say hello. That's it. Just say hi. There you go.
Hi.
How are you all doing today?
I'm good. I like it. An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Council, thanks you all for being here this afternoon. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a vote on the reconsideration of Resolution 2019-81 to award bids an estimated amount of $450,000 for emergency pothole repair services to be utilized by the Street Maintenance Division. A is communication from Local 251. B is communication from the City Attorney's Office.
Public hearing was held. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm bringing this back because I have a few questions I don't think were answered the last time. So I've been delving into this with a number of individuals. So I'm going to ask some questions today, and hopefully somebody from the city, maybe they can give me more information on what we plan to do in the future. First of all, I would like to have Bob Stube.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Okay. As I read this, this says this, I'm reading, it says this is emergency pothole repairs. What does that actually mean?
What that's for is essentially it's a price agreement that we have with three contractors that if and when we need their services, we have an understanding between the city and the contractor with regard to what that cost would be. And so what we've seen in the past is that typically when we come out of winter season, we have a spike in the amount of potholes that occur. And so last year, we were working significant hours, plus it kind of extends out the amount of time that it takes for us to complete that. And so utilizing outside services allows us to kind of shave off that peak.
Okay. And when was the last time you used this concept that you have in front of us?
In 2010.
Okay. So since 2010 to the present day, we've not had a need for it? Or we have and haven't utilized it?
Well, potentially last year, we probably could have utilized that because, again, the issue that we ran into last year was a significant amount of overtime that was expended relative to filling potholes.
Okay. As I read into the 2019 budget on overtime in this particular area, you have around $743,000?
I don't have that information in front of me as far as what that is, so I'll take your word for it.
Right. It's approximately that. And now this $450,000, which you're proposing, where does that, does that money come out of that $700,000, some odd thousand dollars?
Well, we have in the budget, I think we've got, and without having the budget in front of me here, I think it's like $22 million that is budgeted for what we would consider as pavement maintenance. And so within that budget line item would be all types of maintenance activities, whether it's filling potholes or repairing panels in streets and things like that. So that $450,000 would come out of that $22 million organization that we have within the street maintenance budget.
Okay. So if I happen to be one of the union people, that should not affect the dollars that I may be capable of getting? Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. And again, why, what is the, I'm trying to think, when do you decide to use that? That's, I'm just curious. I mean, do you have a matrix or something?
As far as when we decide to use the contractors?
Yes.
Essentially, it'll be a decision that's made by the street maintenance engineer. And again, it's based on the quantity of potholes that will come up. And again, it's essentially generated through numerous, whether it's the hotline or whether it's a call down to the street maintenance yard, or whether it's through the city app or something like that. So it's based on the quantity that will come in.
Okay. And one of the issues is the overtime, who wants it and who does not want it? Is that one of the reasons why this was generated? Because we are all having a hard time filling overtime?
Yeah, I think based on what I recall from the last time that the street maintenance engineer was here, he indicated that his staff, Public Works employees, were working significant hours. And I think even when they went to kind of a voluntary, that there was difficulty being able to come up with employees to fill those roles.
Okay. I thank you for.
You're welcome.
Oh, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
In the past, the sewer maintenance people have been utilized, I think, as it's been explained to me, as additional help when it comes to pothole. I know they do the snow.
Traditionally, sewer maintenance staff has assisted when we go into a major snow operation. So they've got equipment that's set aside for actually plowing snow. They're not traditionally utilized for pothole operation.
So I'm to understand that they have not been used in the past as additional help? If they so chose to use the overtime?
Well, and again, I can't specifically say that they've never been used in the past.
So recently.
But traditionally, they are utilized in a snowplow operation. That's kind of our standard operating procedure.
Okay. Again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brooks, I have a question dealing with parks. Brooke?
Brooke Benj, Parks Recreation.
I called you Mr. Brooks. Here's a question. I have been told that in the past, people who work for the parks, I understand they help with snow, but they have also helped with potholes?
There was one season that we did help with potholes, yes.
And that was by their choice of doing it if they so chose?
I do believe we had worked it out with Public Works that we were going to, we had a lot of things that we were getting ready for during the spring, but we had probably 20 or 30 staff that helped out at that time, that specific year, to help out with potholes.
Can you recall, was that successful?
The challenge that we had with Parks employees is that Parks employees have never been trained to do potholes. So there was a training process that was involved, and at that time, I would say, they did get trained, and they did help at that time.
Okay. Thank you again. The point I'm trying to get at here, it seems like overtime is one of the issues that this has come up, and I'm trying to get to the bottom of it. And I'd be honest with you, I've talked to both sides, and I get sort of a mixed bag on the information that I get, which makes sense to me because we all look at things in our, to our point of view. But I did pick up some, what I thought, some interesting facts. I'm looking at, I'm just going back for a couple of years, and I'll just say, from the year 2014, out of class of 20, only five of those people are still working in that department, which is a significant loss of 65. Then I go to, I'm jumping to 2015, that class of 30, only 10 are still working as an AEO-1. And a class of 2017, out of the 12, only four are still currently AEO-1. Now, I know this is a hard job, and probably a job that many of us sitting up here would have a hard time performing, even me and my youth, although I've done things similar. And I don't think people appreciate how hard individuals such as this do work, because every once in a while, they do need to take a break, and somebody will say, well, gee, look, they're just standing there. They don't realize how hard it is unless you've done that type of work. But here's some more information I thought was very interesting. So I see, to me, there's an issue here that needs to be resolved. I just took, taking a look at the 2017 to 2018 AEO-1 turnover. Now, there were 21 people who I'm going to talk about. I have their names, but I'm not going to give you, I have the dates, when they started and when they left for some reason or another. Number one, no longer works for the City of Omaha for various reasons. Number two, moved to sewer maintenance. Number three, no longer works for the city. Number four, no longer works for the city. Number five, moved to sewer maintenance. Number six, no longer works for the city. Number seven, no longer works for the city. Number eight, moved to traffic. Number nine, moved to sewer maintenance. Number 10 was terminated. Number 11 was moved to sewer. Number 12 was moved to sewer. Number 13, no longer works for the city. Number 14, no longer works for the city. Number 15, no longer works for the city. Number 16, no longer works for the city. Number 17, no longer works for the city. Number 18, works as a housing inspector. Number 19, no longer works for the city. Number 20, no longer works for the city. Number 21, no longer works for the city. In my previous employment, if somebody had looked at my staff, and I was losing a good many of my staff, they would, they'd probably want to know why that was happening. And I'd have to be able to defend that. Again, I know this is a tough job. It is a beginning job for many people, because you did see that a number of them moved on. But you can see at least 13 of the 21 left this job. There's a reason why that's happening. What it is, I don't know. As I said, I've talked to people on both sides, about a number of people who did want to have overtime, and we got a mixed bag on that. I have to admit, today, we got an email from the city giving us a number of examples of why people did not want to do, or did not choose to do overtime, and also about the number of people who were dismissed. And, you know, it looked large, but then you start figuring the number of hours that were dismissed, and then I started figuring out, because I do know division, all of a sudden, it's like four employees was causing, were causing most of the issues. There's something is going on here. That's the reason why I'm bringing this up. I'm not, I'm not trying to necessarily point fingers at anybody, but there's an issue here that we need to address. And I think we are on that track, and I'm going to ask Mr., to come forth, and just some of the things that you think we should or will be doing.
Good afternoon. Tim Young, City Human Resources Director.
Would you just sort of outline some of the things you've, we've been discussing that you?
Sure, absolutely. Well, first and foremost, the 251 contract, and I believe Mr. Burkhalter is in here, he's the president of the union, there's a provision in there, it's called the Joint Advisory Committee. And for whatever reason, it dates, it predates my arrival to the city. We haven't used that provision to its fullest capability. So as of yesterday, we recommissioned the committee, and it consists of three members of the union, three representatives of the city, and it's designed to get both parties together and not negotiate, not bargain, but just talk. Just talk about matters of mutual, you know, mutual concern. So we met yesterday, we are in the process of coming up with an agenda, and I think that that is going to go a long way, and at least trying to drill down and find out what the issues are. You know, my role as Human Resources Director is I want to get the best quality applicants into the city as I possibly can, and once we get them here, I want to make sure that we can keep them here. And, you know, I commute back and forth every day, and I can't listen to the radio without hearing a signing bonus here or a referral bonus there for the private sector, and we can't compete with that. So we are trying to find a way to compete with that. And, you know, I can jump into the job study now if you want.
Yes, go ahead.
So as a result of that, and in part, it came out of negotiations with Local 251. We worked very well with Local 251 negotiating the wage terms in general, and we drilled down into some specific wages. But now what we're going to do is we're going to do a comprehensive citywide civilian study, which hasn't been done really since the late '90s. And we're going to look at two things. We're going to look at the Omaha market in specific, and then we're going to look at what other jurisdictions elsewhere, comparable cities to Omaha, are doing. It's going to be a lengthy process. The cost is going to be significantly less than we anticipated, but at the end of it, we're going to analyze the data, and we're just going to, you know, brainstorm, and we're going to try to figure out what to do with the data, because we want to make sure that, like I said earlier, that we're getting the best quality applicants and we're able to keep them.
Okay. What about the class? You say you just signed a number of individuals or offered positions?
Yes. As of last week's council meeting, it was represented that the, and you know, Director Stube can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they were budgeted for 90 AEO-1s. There was currently 88 as of last week. 85 of those were streets, three of those were parks. So we recently hired 16 AEO-1s, and those were factored into those numbers. Those 16 were supposed to start yesterday, and of those 16, four of them, they didn't even, they didn't even show up. So there is a problem that we're trying to address, and, you know, if we had a list of super-quality applicants, we could drill down and get those people in. Just for historical perspective, in 2014, we tested for this position one time. We had 140 applicants one time. So many applicants that the following year, the list was still good, and we didn't even have to test the next year. In 2018 alone, we posted and tested for this position four times. Now, four times seems like a lot, but what we do is we keep getting the same applicants over and over again. And if you get passed over in March, because you have a criminal history, or you have, you know, something that prevents you from being hired, we're certainly going to pass you over the next time. So we need to, you know, stop putting a Band-Aid on this, and we need to, you know, have the surgery and do a long-term recruiting strategy, which we have put in place.
And just clarify, how many people do we have right now that you just hired yesterday or started yesterday? How many additional?
12 actually arrived for a brand-new, 12 brand-new AEO-1s, and there's a week-long training class, and after that week is done, they'll be, you know, you'll go forth and conquer.
Okay. So that in itself, if overtime, if some individuals are being worked an unbelievable amount of hours, this should help with that issue? With 12 additional people?
It should help with the issue, yes.
Okay. Have you looked at where the overtime is an issue? Because the city, as my understanding is, broken up into five districts. I've been told not every district has this as an issue, maybe one or two because of the staffing.
Yes. And I'll try to clarify, based on my understanding, and I, I'm not going to sit here and begin to tell you that I know about street maintenance operations.
No, I don't.
But my understanding is that there are five districts, and whenever the voluntary overtime opportunities are, you know, put out there, the most recent one, I believe, was in April, and it was a pothole crew. And they only had three volunteers total from all five of the districts. Three of the districts didn't have any volunteers whatsoever. So my understanding is the end result of that is that, you know, there's this pothole problem, and the Street Maintenance Division was only able to put one crew out onto the road to do repairs.
Well, hopefully with these new individuals, they'll have that energy to pick up that slack then, if we need them.
I would, I would like to think so, yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else you would want to add that you anticipate helping with this issue?
No, not that I would anticipate. You know, my goal is to get back to the glory days of when, you know, the automotive equipment operators, you know, wanted to, you know, wanted to work for the city. You want to come to the city, and you want to, you want to do a great job, you want to make a difference, and you want to enjoy the great benefits that the city has to offer. We'd like to get to the point where we can test every March and every August, and then everybody knows, you know, street maintenance is going to test March and August, and then we're going to focus on aggressively recruiting, you know, all areas of the city, and all publications, and get back to the way that things used to be.
And your staff told me word of mouth, actually, it's a pretty good thing, if somebody works for the city, and they have good feelings about the city, that's a good reference, I thought I was told.
Absolutely. That's the, that's the biggest recruitment tool that we have.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, I'll let you go then.
Now, does anybody else have any questions? I'm here to answer any questions you might.
I'll let them call you up if there's one.
Okay. Thank you.
Another thing, I know if I were working in 251, I'd probably feel, oh, somebody's, they may be pecking on me. And I'm going to try to explain in my eyes why I view that just maybe a little bit different. And I'm going to ask Steve Curtis to give me some examples. I gave him a list of some of the things that I've been talking about, so he didn't get caught in, blindsided, you might say. I asked, on the short term, we have short term, that we hire individuals or companies to help us. Now, like on the, I'll let you see, on the solid waste, the RFP preparation, could you give me what that costs us, Mr. Curtis?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I'm looking through my list right now.
That's SCS engineers?
SCS, yeah.
You got the top?
In the last two years, it was $200,000.
Okay. See, we went outside our, that division. In what division would that fall under? Solid waste?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm going to jump down. I have a number of them, like, one that's going to hit us here pretty soon, is we talked, because we approved the contracts, sidewalks, no removal. I'm not asking for that, but that's, to me, is going to be another painful thing to come up with. What about the parking facilities repair program?
Approximately $200,000 in the last two years.
Okay. Now, what department would that fall under?
That'd be in the parking fund.
Okay. Labor negotiations?
$168,000.
And that would be, and we do have, we have people on staff right now, and I, as I looked at, I even think that would maybe have been more of that, but I'll let that one go. But labor negotiations, so if I was, were attorney, I could feel upset, because I'm on the, on the city, and I think I can do that, but we do go outside. So it's just not you or one group that we are looking at. We do use an awful lot of resources outside. We have, of course, I'll move on down. Now, I'm going to ongoing. The solid waste collection, under Waste Management, how much do we pay for that approximately?
In the last two years, it was almost $29 million.
Okay. Now, you know, really, if we wanted to, city could collect waste. You think about that. Nothing to say that we cannot, could not have our own group of trucks, men and women who we could hire. We could do that, but we choose not to. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but that would be a nice thing. In fact, I'm a little disappointed that wasn't on the table initially, to be honest with you. I have a, I'll just jump to a couple more. Workers' compensation case management by CorVel.
About $400,000 over the last two years.
Okay. And that would be under what department?
I believe we code that to Human Resources.
Okay, Human Resources. So if I worked for Human Resources, I could feel a little bit uptight, because maybe if we'd hired me or somebody else internally, but we don't. We go outsource, because the cost is a factor. What about, so many people really forget about this one, animal control, the Humane Society.
Approximately $1.4 million over the last two years.
Okay. We're responsible for that, and look how much money that we pay an outside agency to run that for us. It's not the only one. What about, this is a big one, CSO program management by Jacobs?
Just short of $17 million over the last two years.
Nice chunk of money. And I have others. Well, let's try HR benefits out of Silverstone.
Just a little under a half a million over the last two years.
Okay. And I'll just, some of the things that not even talked about, the right-of-way mowing. I think you'd be surprised, we don't do that. We hire it out. Residential streets, snow plowing, we hire that out. We even hire private people to administrate it. And then, of course, then we administrate the administrators. And construction, you know, all these streets that you see out there, the one that I really like, that's actually in your district, is the best thing that Swain ever did for the city on 132 Pacific. City didn't do that. So a lot of these dollars that we are spending, these do not go into government employees that are sent out to the business world, and then that in itself generates money within the community. You're going to see me, not today, because I have too many topics to talk about today, but in the future, on some of these consent things that we sign up, I'm going to start saying, hey, that's a business person. You take a look at the amount of dollars, well, just like today, we're on a consent, we're going to vote on, we had a public hearing last week, 89 million. What should we need to? To Hawkins, construction. That's not to the people, not to the people who are working in the city, it's to companies. There are just so many dollars that we spend that actually generate back to the, so we're talking about $450,000 that city employees think that they should have more of a stake in. So I understand their point. But as I see it, that, I'm talking to those people in 251 right now, you're going to see me change my vote today, because I'm going to believe what Mr. Young says we're going to do. We're going to make this thing work. We're going to work, I think, when you have both groups talking, and every once in a while, you're going to get mad. I didn't say negotiating, because that's not going to be part of the deal. That's a totally separate thing. But if we can get each group to talk to each other, maybe you can say, hey, the reason why we, a little bit angst about this overtime is because this district, district, let's say District Five, we don't have enough people, so they're going to have to keep being called back. I think these things could be ironed out. So that's why you will see me probably take a different point of view this time around. And I'll, I'll leave you to the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to take our advice, and I won't belabor or repeat anything I said last week about this issue, but I will follow up a little bit. Obviously, when I seen emergency pothole repair on the agenda, it sparked my interest, maybe because of the department, maybe because of how it works. I mean, if you think about a Parks Department in California, that's battling a wildfire, that's an emergency. Maybe a hurricane for the traffic division in Florida, that's an emergency, the aftermath. Or maybe snow in New Mexico, that's an emergency. But here's a news flash, we live in Omaha. I can tell you what's going to happen every season, whether it's a little bit or a lot. There's going to be this thing called a freeze-thaw cycle. And what happens is, it gets warm, and it melts, and it gets into these cracks, and then it freezes, and it pops these chuck holes. So when I see emergency pothole repair, I have to, the first thing I think is, wait a second. Do we not know about this? Or is management just not ready for this? So you ask questions, and you start digging in, and you find out that there is actually some possible management issues within this division. And I'm not pointing fingers, but I think you just heard a lengthy recap of what Councilmember Pauls just had with the mass exodus out of this division, for whatever reason it is. I don't know. I'm not in the division. But I can tell you one thing, because I'm pretty sure from this group of people right here and behind me, I'm probably the only person who's ever filled a pothole. And I know you're not going to want to hear this, but no matter how many emergency crews, three, four-man people we have to hire outside of this bargaining unit, they're not going to be fixed. That's just the facts. I don't care how many employees you have out servicing the streets we have, you're not going to control it. It is an impossible task. It's not the mayor's fault. It's not the AEO-1's fault. This is where we live. So when I see emergency, I instantly think, wait a second. How can this be an emergency? We should know. We should be prepared. And if we're not, then I think that's why we're here today, trying to figure out how we become prepared. Because what I did is I put out a call. I'm like, hey, anybody that wants to say something to me without fear of retaliation, because unfortunately, that does happen. And then I did hear a couple emails that we say got sent through the channels, that one of them people may have been let go. And I have some added incentive to find out if that's true or not, that they were let go, and for whatever reason that is. But out of all them calls and emails I received, it pointed to a morale issue. And I'm not going to sit here and say that employees are easy to find these days. It's across the whole entire city. We have a lot going on, and to Mr. Young's credit, it's not easy filling all these spots. We have a lot going on, and to Mr. Young's credit, it's not easy filling all these spots. But I think the reason we're here today for this pothole repair, and again, I'm not against outsourcing in certain departments when it's necessary. And to be honest, I probably wouldn't be against this one if our staffing levels were anywhere close to being fulfilled, but they're not. So what's the dangerous precedent we're setting here? It's okay not to fill these spots, or have every reason why we just can't fill them, or listen to all the reasons people left? Or do we really want to buckle down and take care of the city? Because I know knocking doors, it wasn't that long ago, I guarantee you the thing I heard each and every door was fix my roads. So when this is in front of us, that now all of a sudden it's an emergency, and we're not prepared for it, something has failed. And shame on us for not knowing, or I guess shame on us moving forward, that we don't stay on top of this, because this is what we hear, and this is our job. Like I said, I won't continue on, I could go on and on, but I'll spare you the suspense, I will not be changing my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. As I indicated a couple weeks ago, I didn't really appreciate the spot the council was putting on this issue, not having previous knowledge of understaffing in the street maintenance department, until the contract appeared on the council agenda, and now it's mid-February, and pothole season is upon us. I'm not supportive of contracting for this service, and I think Councilmember Palermo and Local 251 have proved their point, that we are understaffed in this area, and the hiring hasn't kept up. And I think the HR memo we received acknowledges that. Mr. Young, I might have a couple questions for you, and maybe for you, or maybe for Mr. Stube, if you can decide who can best answer these. But I had a few follow-up questions from this morning as well. So the key category for this work is the AEO1s. And as Mr. Pauls was just acknowledging, the memo we received said we're down four, but in the four categories that might typically be someone to do this work, we're down 16, as of January 30th was that memo. But there are offers out to 16, 12 of which showed up on Monday. And so my question to you this morning was, when would those folks be done with training and actually on the street and available to do this work?
I believe it's just one week training, and Bob can chime in anytime, but it's one week training. We tend to hire this position in blocks, get everybody trained, so we can get them all out there and ready to go.
Mr. Stube, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And if so, if that's one week from Monday, in your opinion, do we still need this short-term contract to fully address potholes this season?
Again, what we're indicating here is that it essentially gives us the ability to, if and when we need outside services to assist our crews in performing that particular work, because we don't have any idea how many potholes are going to be called into the city that need to be addressed. We go based off of kind of our history, and as I previously indicated when we've talked about that, I've showed that right after we come out of the snow season, there's essentially a peak in the number of complaints that we get. And it's essentially utilizing those outside services allows us to shave that peak off so that we don't have an extended amount of time and effort that's done by city forces to be able to get that work done in a timely fashion.
So what happened at this point if the contract was not approved?
Essentially, we'd be working overtime, and potholes that might get turned in today might be two weeks before they get filled.
As opposed to what you hope is a three-day standard? Is that right?
We would hope, based on, you know, our efforts, that we can get it down to five or six days.
The last time this was a thing was in 2010. Was that successful, and how much did that cost?
I think that particular time that the contract was approved for three-quarters of a million dollars, and I think we expended more than that.
And what were those results? Did we have measures or ways to address that?
I'm not sure I have data to support that question.
Okay. I think I've heard mixed reviews about it, but they were anecdotal, and I don't know that I do have the data either. Mr. Young, so I think the administration has acknowledged we are understaffed in this area for this work right now, but my question to you is, I'll just ask it directly, it's not intentional, right? In other words, this is not a, this doesn't represent a policy by which we're moving towards contracting versus the desire to fully staff the department and have our own employees do the work?
It's absolutely not intentional. You know, I cannot speak to the operational side of pothole repair. What I can speak to is, you know, what I hear. And, you know, we've got various employees, and you pick a department, if they're unhappy with something, social media is huge. So this last round, there's been a few messages that were sent to the mayor's Facebook page regarding their displeasure with having to work so many hours. I get phone calls from wives, I get phone calls from girlfriends, I get phone calls from people, and I know that I've said this before, you know, work-life balance, it matters to a lot of people. And regardless of which way, you know, the council votes, you know, my goal is to continue to get the best quality applicants and find a way, you know, to keep them. And in the meantime, not have them so overworked that before we have a chance to do the surgery and fix the big problem, I don't want to lose any more, similar to what Councilman Pauls, you know, alluded to.
I think it was important to get that on the record, and I do want you to know I fully support staffing that department. And although I'm not on the Public Works Department or Public Works Committee, that's something I'm going to be following very closely over the next year. And I was going to ask the question Mr. Pauls already asked, which was, what's the plan to do that and when? But I think you've addressed some of those things, and I believe you when you say that. There's a plan you're working on, and this new committee has been engaged. But I want you to know I'll be watching that, the outcome of that. So I think I'll just finish by saying, I think that the administration has acknowledged understaffing, and that's greatly concerning to me with pothole season upon us. I would greatly prefer that our employees are doing this work themselves, and I think they're up to that task. But I think we're in a spot right now where it's mid-February, and I don't know that we have an option, other than to supplement that work right now in the short term. But regardless of how the vote turns out today, I'll be monitoring those levels, and think it's important that we do get fully staffed and allow our employees to do that work.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
I just have a question. When we vote on this, tell me, we're going to vote yes or no for the reconsideration, then we vote for?
Yes.
Okay. So we need four to be reconsidered, and then we need, if it does pass, and then we would?
It would just be another... Yep, so we'll vote on the reconsideration, which takes four votes to pass, and then you'll need a motion in a second on the resolution again. And then it would be four votes to pass, yep.
That was your question? Okay. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Pauls for his investigation findings and research. I thought that was well done, well presented. And I guess, Bob, I'll, Mr. Stube, I'll direct most of these questions to you. So, and some of this may be repetitive, but I think it's worth noting. The program is designed or set up to be budgeted to an up to number of $450,000, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to expend all that, but, you know, I'm guessing from recent snows and freeze thaw cycles, we probably will be using a lot of that. So how will, and in this process, will city employees, 251 employees, still be eligible for doing some of the work and getting overtime?
Traditionally, that's the case, yes, is that, I mean, we're not going to necessarily cut back on the amount of work that's being done by city forces. But again, it comes to the point where we come out of three or four days of continuous 24-hour operation, and then we go into a pothole operation. And again, based on last year, there was a lot of complaints about working significant amount of hours.
Okay. And then, how will the contractors and the city coordinate where or what routes are assigned to the contractors?
So we've got staff down in the street maintenance division that will actually identify. It's no different than, we identify locations where contractors plow snow versus where city staff are going. So we'll have the staff actually do that.
Okay. And I think I brought this up the first time this was on our agenda, but I want to, I think it bears repeating, just because of, we want to make sure that the people out there doing the work, regardless of who they are, we have had accidents, both resulting in injury and death in the past. So will the contractors be required to follow the city's safety procedures?
Yes. In fact, we put out a set of specifications that they're supposed to bid on, and those prices that are in front of you should incorporate, you know, those practices that we have for our own forces.
Okay. And then, as I think Mr. Festerson asked this question about, when was this strategy used before? And I think it was 2010. And if I remember right, I think the budget on that was about $750,000. But we ended up, actually, because of the need, spent a little more that year?
To my recollection, that yes, it was authorized for $750,000, and if I can recall correctly, we did go over that amount.
Okay. And I know, I know this is called emergency, or the emergency pothole repair, or, you know, whether or not it's an emergency or a critical need, or standard practice, or life in Nebraska. I was going to make a joke about whether it's a wall or a barrier. Even if we were fully complimented, staff-wise, to take that peak off, would we still have the possibility, or at least want to have the possibility, to tap into this, using this program?
Again, this, you are giving us the authority that if and when we need to utilize outside services, we have the ability to do that. And again, I try to use it, whether you look at it as being an emergency or not, I look at it more from the perspective is that we get an influx of pothole complaints that come right out of the snow season. And when we get snow that piles up alongside the road, the freeze thaw, as Councilmember Palermo indicated, we get potholes that pop up, and we don't have any control over that. And so this essentially allows us to be able to shave that peak off, is what we're doing.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a follow-up comment and question, too. So, hear me loud and clear, I want your potholes fixed, just like everybody does. But there's a right way to do it. And this pothole repair does not guarantee that they're going to be fixed, because there's a process in which, how that works, and I heard that possibly if the street maintenance employees did it, it might be a couple weeks, or if we outsourced this, it would be five to six days. So I got a question for Mr. Stube, so we can clarify this and maybe simplify it a little bit. And the scenario will be, the city employees, whoever's on hand, there's not a snow emergency going on, it's the daily routine in street maintenance, and the asphalt plants are closed. So, and we have a spike in potholes. Tell me, and you can be brief, tell me the procedure for the emergency call-out for this repair service, if this were approved? Like, the process of, people are calling in, the mayor's hotline's being flooded, here's the spike, it's go time. Tell me, with the asphalt plant being closed, how these private contractors would take care of our city streets?
Yeah. Essentially, the private contractors are going to get the material from the same location that our staff are going to get the material. And you are correct, that during the wintertime, the asphalt plants are closed, which traditionally would be the best source of material that we can get for filling a pothole. But during the winter season, when we don't have access to the asphalt plants, we're using what we just call a cold patch, or we could be using some leftover materials that we had that we reheated. But the contractors are going to get the material from the same location we do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the second part of this, here's another question. So we've heard that the contractors are going to get the same material from the same location we do, and we know that UPM's going to come from our district yard, which would be our supplies, or we're going to manufacture the recycled asphalt, in which we, as the city and city employees, have to put together to supply to these private contractors. Is that true?
Yeah. Again, the private contractors are not going to have access to the asphalt plant, just like our crews are not going to have access to the asphalt plant. So they're going to get it from the district yards that have that material available.
So with that being said, is it fair to say that, depending on how many city employees it takes to make this material, to supply to the contractors, that we would be pulling city employees off of pothole repair? That would be their normal, daily job?
Well, again, the materials would be supplied at the yards by city staff that would be running equipment to fill city trucks. We're just going to be running equipment to fill not only city trucks, we're going to be running equipment to fill trucks of the contractors working for us.
So it's safe to say that city employees that could be filling holes maybe fill in subcontractors' trucks to go fill these holes?
Well, they're going to be filling city trucks also.
Okay. And then, one more question, I don't know who could answer this, but now that we're in February, and I see emergency, why wasn't this brought to us in the summer? For approval?
Yeah. Again, we're looking at the quantity of complaints that come in. And if they come in the same amount every month, that's a steady flow of work, and we know that we can then essentially handle it with city crews. But when we look at a significant spike that's occurred, you know, during the beginning of the year, essentially, and again, it goes back to what occurred based on last year. We have the data that I showed you that showed a pretty significant spike that resulted in a lot of extra work that was done, a lot of overtime by city forces. And so we looked at it as a way of, here's an opportunity that if we put together a set of specifications, have a price agreement with contractors, that if and when we get into the same situation that we did last year, we can pull the trigger, we have your authority to move forward. We don't have to use them. Essentially, it comes down to is that if the street engineer believes that it needs to get done, then we will utilize those outside services.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stube. I would just say, moving forward, let's go ahead and work on something this summer. First off, getting fully staffed in this bargaining unit to actually take care of these streets. And the other part is, to not have this be an emergency. Again, we know where we live, we know what's going to happen. We shouldn't be talking about this in February. Let's be proactive on this, and if we're basing it off of past weather conditions, or just the patterns we're in, we need to see this in the summer to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. I got, I have a couple of questions. Let me start with a statement, first of all. To begin with, I have gotten more emails and phone calls, I mean, emails and text messages on primarily two subjects. One of them have to do with slum lords, the other one has to do with this particular issue. In this particular issue, I've gotten more than 30 emails and text messages, and not one of those individuals said to me, vote for this contract. Not one. So I have some, I have some concerns about that, but I also have some questions, Mr. Young. If I can have you come up for a second for me. And you sent us an email here where it talks about the number of suspensions and the number of employees and so forth. Now, I heard last week that 23 people had been suspended. In your email today, it says nine. Is, can you tell me what the difference that is, or did I hear 23 wrong? Or how did...
I don't know where the 23 number came from. The nine number that you have is based on my conversations with Mr. Dowdy, and he, we simply just came up with a couple of months snapshot.
Okay, so it's just a couple of months snapshot. Mr. Buckholzer, if you could come down for a second, please. Did you hear the number 23, or was it just me? I just wanted you to come down, identify yourself for the record, please, name and address, and, because I thought I heard 23 suspensions.
Tony Burkhalter, 6910 Pacific Street, President, Local 251. The 23, I believe, is compiled from 2018.
All of 2018?
I had to confirm with Kelsey Johnson. If you don't mind, I'll pull her up here, she has the data for me.
That sounds, that probably makes more sense.
Okay. Okay, so, and then, in your email also, it says, of the nine employees, you had four employees who had received multiple day suspensions. Why are we holding on to people that have multiple suspensions?
Because the city operates on a progressive discipline system. So if the offense is minor enough... enough, we can't just immediately move right to termination, that's not something that we wanna do anyway, so if it's something minor enough, like, uh, excess chronic lateness, or, uh, you know, failure to follow city job instructions, something along those lines, the typical progression is reprimand, one day, three day, five day suspension, and then termination, so if an employee has a series of minor violations, that employee could be suspended three times before they're even subject to termination.
Okay, you also mentioned something about background checks, um, for this particular job, I guess I'm wondering what, what we're looking for in a background check, I, I mean, for example, let me, let me give you an example, and, and this is one that was, was given to the legislature and a couple of other places, an individual that is an accountant, uh, who is, who has a felony for DUI, that doesn't make him less of an accountant, nor should it move him out of being possibly a prospective employee as an accountant, from that basis, that's why I'm asking my question, what is our, what, what background checks do we go into, and, and are they, are they somehow associated with the job that they have to do as an AEO-1?
Y- yes, and, and no, the, uh, the main background check that we do is a driving record, you know, every AEO-1, 2, and 3 all has to have a CDL license, so that's the very first check that we run.
I, that makes sense.
Uh, so if you, so that one makes sense, then we move on to, um, a criminal background check, and that, quite honestly, is a case-by-case scenario, uh, if you have somebody who was, you know, recently, uh, released from prison, we would look at the underlying defense, uh, if you have a DUI 10 years ago, if you make a mistake 10 years ago, we understand that, and we're willing to give people a chance, and I get phone calls from applicants all the time, who get, you know, disqualified for one reason or another, and they have the ability to reach out to me, I'll look into their case, some of them I overturn, some of them I don't, but it's, it's proximity, it's the underlying offense, it's currently on, uh, you know, parole, if you have a pending court case, we're not gonna hire somebody with a pending felony court case, or a misdemeanor court case, because we don't know, we don't want them to work a month and a half, and then have the judge sentence them to a period of incarceration, and then we're right back where we started.
I understand, and I guess I just wanna know if there is, if there's specific criteria used, for example, for example, someone that, that, that was convicted of not necessarily distribution, but use of marijuana five years ago, is that person eligible?
Yes, fi- five years is the, uh, the typical, the tipping point that, that we look at, and again, each applicant is a case-by-case basis.
Okay, now, let me go to another portion of your email where you said that there were, in terms of overtime, there were 26 voluntary overtime opportunities that resulted in 78 refusals, does the, does the 26 reflect the opportunities available, and the 78, the number of people that you went to that said no?
Yes, so 78 people said no before, it's my understanding in speaking with, with streets, is that 78 people said no before we got to 26 positions filled, and that's over the course of, uh, that's over the course of time, I don't know how many, how, how much time these opportunities were, but those are the data that was, uh, that was given to me this morning.
Okay, and then in the winter shift, AEO-1 specifically, this winter shift, this past, this current winter shift, 68 opportunities resulting in 217 refusals?
Yes.
I, we had this discussion with some of the employees of 251, are you guys aware of these numbers?
Of individuals turning down the overtime?
Of, of turning down overtime?
When it, when it is deemed, um, unnecessary overtime, then that's when they turn it down, so when you come-
Deemed by-
What I, what I mean by unnecessary, as far as, with the current workload that we have on, on today, if you have 97 work orders, um, and, and it, and an employee has worked, uh, two weeks of overtime in the 12-hour shifts and whatnot, uh, to, to come right off of that, and expect for an employee to willingly volunteer their, their time, their weekends, when they've been forced on the past weekends, is unrealistic, you know, these guys will say, "I, I don't wanna work this weekend in particular, I need a break," so they may take off a, a couple of days, and then they'll hammer it right back and knock it out, that's when they'll swi- switch right back to a 12-hour shift, so they may have turned down that overtime, but it's not necessarily all the overtime.
Okay, so-
'Cause if you look, excuse me, one more, if you look at the budget, it was 1.5 million dollars in overtime, so the guys actually did do a lot of overtime.
Okay, all right, um, I think that's pretty much all the questions I have, let me go back over this one more time, just to make sure I'm right, so the 23, again, was for the whole year of 1918, 2018?
1918.
2018.
As far as the suspensions?
As far as suspensions?
Yes.
Okay, so that was for the whole year, okay.
And again, you know, by way of repetition, that number probably reflects a very small number of employees.
Okay, and, and the 78 refusals, and the 217 refusals, those were opportunities that you went to at least 217 people, and then another 78 people, and they said no?
That is correct, over the course of however many events.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Jarom.
I don't, I don't know how this vote, or the next one's gonna come out on this, but I do think that, um, I don't know whether it's more properly the HR and HRR Committee, which probably should be where this happens, or the Public Works Committee, but I think we need answers from this division, and the Director for Public Works, why we lost 13 out of 21, no one could answer that today, and your investigation is really, uh, piqued my curiosity as to what in the world is going on in this division, and we need answers, and so I have a question for Mr., Mr. Young, do you, uh, Mr. Young, have the people internally who are capable of investigating what is going on, and why we have this turnover, and, and reporting back in the next month, why this is happening, whether it's contacting these people who are no longer the city, or, 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 you know, taking statements from those who are there, who know them, or the department and the manager?
Yeah.
To me, this seems like it's, it's unacceptable turnover numbers.
I, I would agree, and I, we do have the capability of reaching out to most, if not all, and, and I'll, I'll, you know, gather my staff together, and we'll try to come up with a, uh, a plan, one thing that I know going forward, um, you know, we've never been, uh, historically very good about doing exit interviews, unless it's a, uh, a, a higher-level position that's incredibly difficult to, to fill, and as we're finding out, these AEO-1 positions are incredibly difficult to fill, so, you know, going forward, we're going to be exploring, uh, exit interviews, so we know why, typically, you know, the word on the street, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, is that, it's, you can't compete with the private sector, so a lot of these people will come to the city, um, and either leave to go to the private sector, or they'll come just to get the CDL, and then go to the private sector, or, um, it, it's the, uh, it's the transferring out of street maintenance, where the overtime is not as excessive, the labor's not as intensive, and, you know, things of those natures.
To, um, Mr. Harding, he's the Chairman of the Committee, whether he, he's comfortable with his committee or my committee, um, I'll leave it up to him, whether you wanna do it or not, your committee, but, um, I think this is something that we need to get to the bottom of, this, this is really, um, alarming numbers, uh, the other thing I would say is that, I don't know why we picked five years out of the hat for the number, where we look at people applying for these positions, and we're so, um, discerning and, and rigid on a five-year look back as to people who may have had issues in their past, who are trying to repair their, and restore their lives and their sense of dignity with a decent job, when, you know, why isn't it three years, or, you know, why is it a two years, um, and maybe you have more flexibility, as you alluded to in your testimony, but I wanted to give you that opportunity, because I think, with all the efforts we're trying to do as a council, and the mayor, in places like Heartland Workforce Solutions and other places, uh, Reentry Project, um, people coming out of the, being incarcerated that, that are going through these, uh, successful retraining programs, and wannabe productive citizens, to me, when you have a job that starts in the 35,000 range, with overtime and good benefits, why aren't we setting the standard for our communities, is to show other employers that this can in fact work? So, I don't know how you came up with the five-year number, but I'd encourage you to, to look at that number.
Sure, and, and typically, it was the five-year, uh, figure that is, you know, thrown around in, in the courts, so that's kinda where we're, where we, where we begin, but there's no set, there's no set number, and I can think of in the last couple of months, three candidates, uh, two of which in streets, and one in another department, that, you know, were disqualified, I, I don't see the disqualifications until, until they wanna appeal, you know, to me, and then, you know, I'll, I'll talk with them, and I'll work with them, and, uh, you know, all of these candidates who, who care enough about calling me to, you know, question, you know, "Why was I disqualified?" you know, I will work with them and, and point them in the right direction, and, and every single one of them thus far has done everything that I've asked them to do, and, and they've all been hired.
Yeah, maybe it's too naive to think that it's as simple as, if you got someone who wants to show up every day, just got the driver's license, the CDL that you want, and they're willing to work hard, that, you know, we, we don't, at, at this position, see it as a broader opportunity to-
Understood.
-to reemploy people who are coming back out.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Harding.
I was just gonna say, for the record, I'd be happy to take that into our committee and, and have Mr. Young report back on, on that.
Thank you, I, I've got one other question, uh, before I call, I will call for the vote, unless someone else has any questions, but my other, my other question is, and I don't know whether Mr. Young would be able to do this better than Mr. Stube, just, I just wanna know, is, are, are, if, if we approve this contract today, are we still, and I still have some heartburn about it, but I think I'll go in the direction of being safe rather than sorry, I don't, I'm not sure about that yet, but, um, Mr. Stube, would, would the employees that we currently have still be offered the overtime first, before we go out to some private contractor?
Uh, Bob Stube, Public Works, that would be the case, again, this is, uh, essentially an if and when, we need outside services to assist us, because we got this speak, spike in, uh, pothole complaints that come in, but we would utilize our existing staff, yes, so, 'cause again, there, we utilize them for snow removal, and they've been working 12-hour straight shifts for probably three or four days straight.
Thank you, um, I guess, let me close, let, let me close my remarks by saying, um, I hope that, you know, Public Works and Tim, I know you're listening, but I, I, please understand that, that what I'm getting from the council is the same thing that I have, and that is a concern that there was something not right going on in the department that needs to be addressed, um, and so, you know, my, my concern is, is expending dollars, uh, in an area where we evidently have some issues that need to be worked out, so, um, I think in this particular instance, Mr. Palermo, you're right, you're right, you're right, but I think the error on the caution on the side of making sure that, making sure first of all, that they get, people get the overtime that they should rightfully get if they want it, and, and I know we're not gonna get to all of the potholes that we need to get to, so, I'm in my remarks there, 'cause I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote on this thing yet, but, um, there are some concerns, and those concerns need to be addressed, and hopefully, your office and others will get at those concerns, uh, is there a motion?
We don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a-
Motion in a second, yeah, we're taking it at the last meeting.
Take the vote, cut, vote, please.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Jarom-
No.
Melton-
Yes.
Mr. President-
No.
Motion passed, four to three.
Roll call.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Jarom-
No.
Melton-
Yes.
Mr. President-
No.
Motion passed, four to three.
Next item?
Items seven to 10 relate to the same project, and can be considered together for Highland Hills, located northeast of 168th and Ida Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, item seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District, high density, item eight, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District, item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Highland Hills, item 10, a resolution to approve the Highland Hills subdivision agreement.
Public hearing agenda items numbered seven through 10 are today proponents, please.
The council, my name is Mark Johnson, my address is 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant, see our investments, and just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, public hearing is closed. I'm sorry, opponent?
Opponent.
Thank you.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132, um, I'm, I'm opposed, because, uh, last week, I wanted to speak in opposition to a, a rezoning waiver request, and here I come this week, and I see that there are other rezonings that are being approved, uh, and you opened a public hearing, but then on last week, you opened a public hearing, and then when I wanted to get up, you closed it, I think the rules need to be solid, or explained better for the public, but that's why I oppose these, is because, you know, I don't see where you can approve some and not the others, this property at 5001 Dodge Street has been there for an awful lot of years, as long as I can remember.
Fifty, this is not-
He's asking for a waiver.
This is 168th and Ida.
But I, if you're opposed to it, then you should be opposed to this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve items seven through 10, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Melton- Mr. President-
Yes.
Items seven through 10 are approved, seven to zero. Items 11 to 13 relate to the same project, and can be considered together for Sterling Ridge Replat 5, located southeast of 132nd and Pacific Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval, item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Sterling Ridge Replat 5, item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat for Sterling Ridge Replat 5, item 13, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Sterling Ridge Replat 5 subdivision agreement.
Public hearing agenda items numbered 11 through 13 are today proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Councilmembers Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, um, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, public hearing is closed, moved and seconded to approve items 11 through 13, there are no further lights, roll call.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Melton-
Yes.
Mr. President-
Yes.
Items 11 through 13 are approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for La Casa West, Pacific Springs, located at 610 South 168th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 14 is today proponents, please.
Proponents.
Proponents.
We're the owners.
Well, you better be the proponents.
What was that?
Did you bring the truck?
We're not against it, no, we're for it, we just wanna make sure there's no questions from anybody.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Tony McCanny, Senior.
Uh, Tony McCanny, Junior, 610 South 168th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118.
You didn't bring a box.
We gotta get this license first.
Where's the hamburger?
Thank you, you just hit answering the questions, we may have, right?
Yep.
Thank you, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard, seeing none, public hearing is closed, moved and seconded to approve item 14, no lights, roll call.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Melton-
Yes.
Mr. President-
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero.
Not that you're approved.
Item 15, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for the Monster Club, located at 1217 Howard Street, there is a request by the applicant to postpone this item to the February 26, 2019 City Council Meeting.
Leo, uh, second, roll, roll call.
And continue the public-
And con, yes, roll call.
Pals-
Yes.
Palermo-
Yes.
Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Jarom-
Yes.
Melton-
Yes.
Mr. President-
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed, items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda, in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items numbered 16 through 24 were held on February 5, 2019, moved and seconded to approve, uh, no lights, roll call.
Pals, Palermo, Festerson-
Yes.
Harding-
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 16 through 24 are approved, seven to zero.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 25 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. I would like to also take this opportunity to recognize one of the Omaha Public School Board members, Mr. Ricky Smith. Thank you for joining us today. Again, if you have any, uh, between 25 and 35, uh, would like to hear something from the empowerment network a little bit about Step Up. Give us a little bit of an update on that. But if anyone else has to come down, come on. Let us know if you're a proponent or an opponent and what subject, what, what item you're talking about.
I'm a opponent against number 32.
Number 32.
Renaming of the streets from 30th and Pratt to 30th and Spalding for Lanza Mitchell.
Okay, name and address for the record, please.
Dominic Valentine, 3333 North 36th Avenue. I'm his oldest son, and I was just aware that this is trying to be named from 30th and Pratt to 30th and Spalding, and that's not where my father's legacy began. His legacy began on 40th and Pratt. Anybody that know him, if they move out of town and come back up until four years ago, they could go back to his mom's house where she just moved on 40th and Pratt and find my father. He's not known for being on 30th. His legacy began on 40th and Pratt, from the coach to the barber, to the friend, to the father. And I'm just not with from 30th and Pratt to 30th and Spalding being named after my father.
Can I ask you a question then?
Yeah.
Can I ask you if, if it would be okay with you? Because evidently there was an application that came in, and I did see the application because it was in my district. I haven't signed it yet or anything, I don't think. But someone made that application, and I, I, do you know who it was?
Yes, I know who it was.
Okay, would it be possible for you, for you, if we laid this over for a week, for you all to get together and maybe?
No, then not, unless it's on 40th and Pratt, I'm not, I'm not with it. Because that's where his legacy began.
Yes, I guess we should.
He's finished with his.
Yeah, if you, if you finish with your testimony.
Unless it's with 40th and Pratt, I'm not, I don't want it to be, I don't want a street named after my father, unless it's on 40th and Pratt. Because he's not known for being.
Let, let me, let, let us take this off consent, and then we'll come back to this item if you all don't mind, and then we'll get to the others. Again, vote on those, and then we'll come back to this.
Okay.
Okay?
I would, I would move items 25 through 31 and, and 33 through 35.
We've gotta make sure that nobody else that wants to speak about any of those.
Any others?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak about any other agenda item numbers in, in our consent, uh, in our consent agenda?
Willie Barney, Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street.
Monique Cannon, 2401 Lake Street.
Just wanted to say thank you to the council, to the mayor's office, and everybody that's been helping us to prepare to take this to the next level with Step Up. This will be our 12th year of working with the city, providing quite a few jobs and connecting our youth with career exploration, employment, entrepreneurship, and quite a few other programs. So, we just wanna thank you for your investment and your support. We look forward to working to match the funds to bring even more youth in. But just wanted to also, I think most of you know, but Monique Cannon is a Step Up Employment Director and has taken this to a whole new level. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monique. Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, there's been a motion in a second to.
Aren't any other people that are opponents or proponents of any of these?
Of any of the items.
Cause I saw some people stand up and.
Well, we're gonna come back to 32.
We're gonna come back to 32. Okay, so, uh, other than item 32, are there any, is there anyone else here to speak on any other items in our res, uh, resolution for consent agenda? All right, with not, it's been moved and seconded to approve all items with the exception of item 32.
I saw you trying it up, and you complained before. Do you, are you an opponent or proponent for one of these agenda items? Cause if you are, you need to come down and actually be ready to stand up.
Why don't you come down ahead of time?
Yeah, it would be helpful.
Is item 33 on the agenda or not?
Yes.
You can speak just a little bit slower at times. You don't look back there, so I'm not gonna come down for.
Mr. Store, I'm not gonna keep doing this. You're up to, you're, you're up to oppose something, opposing, please.
I'm gonna make this primarily about the rest, all of the rest of, because your agenda says I can tell you which ones I wanna speak on, but I can't speak on all of them with the time I got. So what I'm gonna say is, I am, I am not against some of these resolutions, but I would like you to make references to American, not African-Americans hyphenated. We're all Americans. I'm not against granting taxpayer dollars for this group and that group. There's lots of groups that march down this aisle, not just the African-American empowerment network. Lots of those groups have tax increment wishes, they have 501(c)(3) designations. I do not. But they're all getting money out of my pocket for property taxes that we can no longer afford. So pretty soon, I will be coming down here to be asking for special privileges and for dollars from the other taxpayers. My house might be one of those slum landlords, which I'm getting tired of hearing about because I can't make all of the improvements. But I can go out there on this patio out here and find code violations, and I, I guess I'll make a complaint about it.
That's not on this agenda.
You've got some loose tiles right out here on your own.
That's not on this agenda, Mr. Store.
Thank you.
Mr. Palermo. You have a, Mr. Palermo?
No.
Leave it alone. Leave it alone. Leave it alone. Leave it, leave it alone. Leave it alone. Question's been called. Uh, roll call, please.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Item 32.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Open a public hearing on the, uh.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing is open on, on agenda item number 32. Proponents, please.
Hi, um, my name is Nicole Mitchell. I'm a proponent. I am not in opposition of the Commemorative Street being moved to 40th and Pratt. That was my original request, but I changed it because his mom moved. So, um, 30th and Pratt, 30th and Spalding, and 30th and Manderson is the area where his family owns a business. So I thought that it would be a good idea to have the street, the Commemorative Street be placed there. But I'm not in, in opposition of what his son says. 40th and Pratt is definitely okay with me if you'll reconsider, um, moving the Commemorative Street there.
Okay, well, why don't I suggest that we do this then? Uh, and if the son is still here too, is he still, okay, how, how about if we do this? How about if we lay this over a week and get the application, um, updated to where it reflects 40th Street?
I would.
And then, and then we'll, and then it'll have to come back through the system. On the 26th.
Okay.
Of this month, and, and it, we'll bring it back then. But again, I'm not sure it'll come back on the 26th because it has to go through a variety of signatures. It's got, if we're, if we're gonna amend it, it has to have the mayor's signature.
So we'll start the whole process over again?
Yeah, I think you do. I think you're gonna have to start it over again, so it'll probably be a little longer than, uh, two weeks before we maybe get those signatures. I'm hoping we can do it in two weeks. Why don't we put it on the agenda for the 26th?
Is it possible to, uh, perhaps resubmit the application that I did? Just maybe change it to 40th Street?
It'll still have to go through the process.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm not sure that you'll have to pay a fee again because I think, um, well, maybe, I don't know, I'm not sure about that, so let me not talk out of school on that. Let me just say, we, we may have to go, we, we have to go through the process again cause I know it requires probably about four or five signatures, and I know it's, Mr. Stube, I think you have a, have to sign off on it too, don't you? Are you planning?
Yeah, planning.
Oh, planning. I, I know there are several people that have to sign off on it, so if we could redo the application, um, let's do that. Okay, and we'll put it on the agenda. Yeah. We, why don't I have one of our staff reach out to you?
I was working with PJ Butler.
Oh, up in, up in planning, yeah. Okay, I work with PJ quite a bit, too.
Okay, um, so I'll just resubmit the application, and then at that time I will discuss the fee.
Yeah, and have PJ get with me on that, too.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll see, we'll see what we can work out.
Okay.
But I, we can put it on the agenda for the 26th, and we can shoot for the 26th, but we might have to lay it over, depending on if we have all the signatures or not. Cause I think it, there's about five signatures, including mine, that has to be on it.
I was gonna say, why not just withdraw it or place it on file?
Why don't we, yeah, that's what we'll do, place it on file, cause then we can bring it off anytime.
Okay.
Okay? So we're placing on file, and you submit the application, and then we'll, you know, and then I'll get with PJ and we'll work something out.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, is that okay? Thank you, okay. So we'll let, it's been, is there a motion to lay over, place on file?
Place on file.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 36, an ordinance limiting a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the city of Omaha. Group number 2019-03 is a revised amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department dated February 12, 2019.
Is there a motion? Second, uh, then that's to move the amendment to the whole?
Yes.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 37, an ordinance limiting a special tax assessment for litter removal on certain lots in the city of Omaha. Group number 2019-04 is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Second, roll call.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Jaram. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 38, a resolution that the city council of the city of Omaha opposes a constitutional amendment limiting the growth of property tax revenue and urges the Nebraska State Legislature to oppose LR8CA.
Public hearing agenda item number 38 is today proponents, please.
Did you ask for opponents?
Proponents.
Proponents. I'm just gonna say that, uh, I'm Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. I support, um, explaining the particulars about the constitution of Nebraska and how the arrangements are for Nebraska and Omahans. The more we talk about, uh, the particulars, in this instance is property taxes, uh, the better. There's a lot of confusion with the public, and I do appreciate council members taking time, uh, out of this agenda to explain some things that not everybody knows about or people are talking. Um, you guys have your, uh, issues, and you speak well, I think. Uh, and I, I see this as part of that. But I just wanted to say though, last bit, that last year I worked for the county, uh, the campaign to reelect Diane Batiatto, and I learned a lot about the properties tax situation and the assessment on, on the property taxes. And it is complicated. And it took me a, a while, um, especially because I'm not a property owner. I rent. And, uh, so, I, I, this is more discussion, so I appreciate that. I'm not gonna, uh, say my, my bit because, uh, it does have to do with your tax levying authority, and that might be off, off the subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Ryan Christiansen, 17112 Hickory Circle. I know that in Florida, they did a, the state legislature did a levy for growth on property taxes, and it's caused a lot of problems for them. So, um, I'm for the resolution to oppose the constitutional amendment in the United Care Room.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. I oppose your opposition on the grounds that I don't know if Omaha has this constitution. I don't know if Douglas County has a constitution. The state does, but the state needs to really amend theirs. There's lots of things in there that are probably way out of date. But more and more, the state, the county and the city seem to be looking like a House of Commons and a parliament. Because you keep passing laws that take tax dollars. Special laws, one, that's one of the constitution things downstate of Nebraska. You will not pass special law, giving special benefits to special people, right there. And that's what we seem to be doing today a lot. I mentioned a little bit of that earlier, that this is not about marching your private army down the aisle for various things. It's about, uh, representing everybody in, in Omaha, not special groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Curtis, I have one question for you.
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Do we currently have any lids, uh, on the city?
Uh, we have at least three that I can think of off the top of my head, and I'd be happy to run through them quickly if you'd like me to.
That would be good.
Uh, first, we have a, a revenue and expense sort of lid imposed on us by the state, and under that one, we have about 56 million, I wanna say, of room under that levy, meaning we've managed to be under that levy. Uh, there's a second one to the state that goes through our levying capacity, and as you work through that one, and we have a staff member who spends quite a few hours putting these all together. quite a few hours putting these all together. On that particular one, we were about 20 cents under that particular levy, so again, we have levy lid room on that one. The final one I can think of is in our charter, and it's the charter says that our, our levying capacity less than a debt service capacity can be 61.25 cents, meaning that you can have debt service on top of that. And we're, our current levies that would be limited by that 61 cents are at about 26 cents roughly, so we have quite a bit of room under that levy lid also.
So, right, so right now, the, the public ought to understand, we do have lids that we have to work with and stay under. On one of the statements, how much has our property tax decreased from other revenue that's allowed us to decrease our property tax? Do you have that idea?
Our property tax roughly 10 years ago was in the 20s, between 20 and 25 percent for our total funding, and it's at about 16 percent today.
Okay. I think that's a factor that a lot of individuals do not realize, or actually, we had, that is a significant, after over 10 years, that's almost a 10-point drop. Am I, roughly, would that be correct, possibly?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I do think that we ought to be commending, of course, the mayor and the council, also our business department for keeping us on the right path. The one thing that concerns me a little bit is when you have a constitutional amendment, it's basically there forever and a day. To get rid of a, an amendment, you just, just don't turn it on and off. If it's a legislature, a bill, you can do that. You can change that year after year, and there are several states that have tried things similar to this, and after a while, they get to find out they get themselves in trouble. I spent most of my adult life in Nebraska, but I was born and raised a Jayhawk, and over the last several years, Kansas has really gotten itself into a bind because of the philosophy of that governor down there, and they're finally, to be honest with you, he's no longer the governor, so they're trying to work themselves out of it. This will take away our flexibility, and as I stated earlier, I think as a city, we really are trying, and if you ever hear the mayor, you, you understand that's part of her life, is watching out for the, the property tax. And for those of you who've been around here for a while, some of you haven't, I mean, you're too young, but Nixon, if you can remember, Nixon had the price and wage freeze that he did by administrative edict, and that sort of messed up our economy for quite a while. It's the same thing, just on the opposite end. So, we need that flexibility, and so that's one reason why I'm proposing this. Typically, I, I do not think the council should get involved in some of these items of the legislature, other than writing a letter or going down and talking, but I see this as a, as a life changer for the city of Omaha, as well as the state, if it would pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we vote on this particular resolution, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Pauls, for bringing it forward. I'd also like to compliment you, not necessarily for bringing this forward, oh, you think I'm gonna do something crazy, do you know? He's nervous. No, I want to compliment you because you and, and maybe one or two other state senators or former state senators had the intestinal fortitude to do what, what ought to be done in Lincoln, and that's address sales tax exemptions rather than do something that's simple-minded as trying to put a lid on property taxes. That's absolutely ridiculous to me, and we should be addressing sales tax exemptions, which you and Mr. Bashir are the only two that I could think of who are former state senators. We even had the intestinal fortitude to take this on, but that's where we ought to be looking, not trying to continue to address property tax. That's just my editorial comment, but thank you for bringing it forward. There are no more lights, is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 39, an ordinance to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Habitat for Humanity to convey properties as described in the agreement. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve the redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Courtyard on Park LLC to implement the Courtyard on Park Town Homes Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1007 Park Avenue in an amount up to $584,778.
Public hearing agenda item number 41, I mean, I'm sorry, number 40 is today. Proponents, please.
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, Suite 1500. Here on behalf of the applicant, also available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve a partnership agreement with Association Forum for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, with an option to extend an additional one year to promote the city of Omaha as a premier destination for conventions and meetings.
Public hearing agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? We did that.
Larry Storres, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I believe this is the same thing that mentioned Chicago last week, which maybe got stricken out, but my, my question is, do we not have professional people here in Omaha that can be doing the promotion of Omaha? I would prefer the dollars stay here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. I'm sorry. Mr. Harding, I'm sorry.
I can't let that one go. Deb, I think you're here. I think that is for the Chicago office, is it not?
Right, it's, it's Deborah Ward with the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, yes. It's Omaha, a salesperson who is going...
Yes. Deborah Ward with the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. It is a Chicago office for an Omaha-based salesperson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo. Is that all your questions, Mr. Harding? I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more for Deb, too. So, is this common practice in the tourism industry to have that presence because it is so competitive, and is this usually what we do?
Yes, we have the same sort, we have the same sort of office situation in Washington, DC. Where a great number of associations are headquartered in Chicago. We've got about 1,600 associations that are based there. They represent about, gosh, 27 million individual members. They, all those 1,600 associations hold meetings across the country. We want to be in front of them and get them to hold their meetings in Omaha.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Next item.
Non-action items, items 42 through 69 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:35.